On the 2nd of July in 2018, and we have a council meeting here right now. So let's go to work, and would you join me in a flexible place?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Summer meetings around here are tropical shirt is the dress of the day. And so, I've said it before earlier meetings, but not the day of, so people are reminded. But those of us that like to put on a show, wear these ridiculous things. Okay, everyone's staff is here. Andy Parks is joining us tonight. Let's see. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't know, not an addition, but I'm gonna move a, a, is it library, board appointment up after the consent agenda. Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias?
Not necessarily a conflict, Mr. Mayor, but just FYI. I know we're involved in a lawsuit against the school district or they against us or something. I did talk with Andy Garner, because I served as a member of the Board of Directors of Oregon Destination Imagination, which is also Odyssey of the Mind about bringing the DI program into the schools here. And we touched briefly about bringing the, perhaps you or I are near the council member to a civics class and maybe having art students design a state and flag as, you know. Also, at one point in time dated the principal attorney of the partner attorney of the company rep or the legal firm representing the schools, but that's not that. I went photographing with Alan Meyer of Pacific Power and have dealt a lot with Pacific Power reps regarding seven-foot placements for solar power. Also, I met with the governor of the Moose Lodge to try to include the Moose Lodge content, and I know that the Moose Lodge is attentive to the cities as well.
Okay. The rest of us stayed in bed.
Thank you. There need to be more moose in the world.
Thank you. Good evening, councillor, you're here. So we're all here. Councillor Gladwell joins us. Okay, let's see. Presentations, comments from the public. Let's do some of those. Dana Sykes, please. Over, tell us, Dana, tell us who you are and where you live and what your concern is about fireworks. I think I know, because you and I have talked about it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, my name's Dave Sykes, and I live over in...
It's Dave, okay, there we go.
Statean Elderly Manor, over on Ida Street, West Ida. And my complaint is the fireworks, illegal fireworks. I lived over in State for seven years. I lived in State for 15. And it just keeps getting worse every year. The seven years over here, I've called in for seven years. It'll be seven years Wednesday for complaints of the fireworks. The neighbors have them pinpointed, called out, they have seen them, nothing's being done, and I'd like to see if something would get done about it. They're illegal, they're breaking the law. Like something done.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask a question of the police chief, I'll put him on the spot a little bit. That's a busy night, 4th of July is a busy night for you folks. What kinds of, what's a tactical attack plan on fireworks reports, please?
Whenever we get a fireworks complaint, all complaints are responded to. It is very difficult to deal with them when we do not have an address. We have to have, we need to have an address and hopefully a name complaintant that's willing to state where they're coming from. Then when we respond over there, we have to build a find them with it and catch them with it in the act, pretty much. If they hide them or don't have them in hand, when we get there, there's not a lot we can do. We do address them when we do catch them with them in their hands. Now, last, this past year, we did enact a new city code that allowed us to handle them a lot easier within the city municipal court, which, that should help the problem with some of the issues that the officers have with them.
I'm reading or listening to a report, probably on the evening news tonight, about Portland teaming up with Portland Fire Bureau. An officer and a fire officer in teams out looking for these things and responding to reports. Is that, would that help at all? Give you more manpower?
It would be, with the, it's something we could look into. It would be very difficult to do that, just because, just to send the firemen out, there's not a lot they could do as far as enforcement without having a sworn fire marshal.
Okay. And sending them with one of your officers, that...
It really wouldn't do any different than what they are right now if you teamed them up, because the one officer can do, would be able to do the same as what having a firefighter in the car as well would do.
Okay.
They're welcome to come along and ride along that night, but there's not a lot much more that they could do than just having the officer in the car.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Another point there is, sir, on me calling them out there, pinpoint them, seven years, same people. And I had two officers come out there, they park in the street, walk up there, and I was out there when they were out, standing out on the sidewalk, seeing the fireworks go off, did nothing but warn them, which this is two years ago, so. And they warned them, and that's it. Soon as they got in the car and took off, they lit five more of them off. I called it in, "Well, we'll get back to you." Never did get back to them.
Mr. Mayor? Just a second. Okay. A question or a comment?
David, thank you for your concerns. I think that one of the things we tried to do is with the ordinance, empower, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, that if they have possession of the illegal fireworks, that is equivalent to setting them off, is that not, sir?
That always would have been the same way if it was illegal fireworks, that always been the case. What this allows us to do, it allows us to handle it easier within the municipal court as a violation versus it's an arrest through the state system.
So David, even if they have them, they can now be cited?
They what?
They can be cited if they have them. They don't have to be setting them off, if they have illegal fireworks, they can be cited.
Yeah, well, they witnessed it, so, because I was standing right by them. So I'm just saying my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larice, Morton, yeah, there we go.
Okay, hello. I too live in the same apartment complex as Dave does. It's Statean elders. So there's a bunch of us elderly people that live there, and most of us have pets. My complaint is, it scares my pet to death, along with most everybody else's. Because these people he's talking about do go to Washington and purchase these illegal fireworks, and, you know, I don't know if y'all have dogs and cats, but I know most of mine don't like it. They're scared to death. I lived in Washougal, Washington, at one point, where they are legal. And one time during the 4th of July, two horses were so freaked out by these noises, they jumped their fence, ran out into the road, and was hit and killed by a big truck. Pets disappear, people are mourning after this, and this is our nation's birthday, and I've come to just to dread it. So that's all I have to say in favor of the pets. You know, this is not good. And they should, they should go ahead and take their fireworks, like, to the school, where they have someplace to do this, not next door, you know? We're a quiet group, and it's just not right, I don't think.
Thank you.
But I don't like my cat hiding under the bed, and my neighbor's dog shaking. I had a dog that during the 4th of July, when you're living there, she had seizures. She had seizures anyway, but one of these 4th of Julys brought her into seizures. Is that fun for people? I don't know, it isn't for me. I just, I'm an animal lover.
Okay.
Okay.
Lots of us are. I shared with you earlier in the evening what we did with Gus. He just put a T-shirt on him, and that calmed him down.
Yeah.
Doesn't look very good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, are, you live in the same complex that the gentleman before you?
Yes, I've been there for three years now.
Okay. And this is, these are the same people?
Same people.
Each year that does this?
Yes. They live right next to us, and then the other people that do this live on the other side of the other complex, our complex, but on the other side.
So you know their address, and you know who they are?
Well, I don't know who they are, I can get their address.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But it's scaring our animals, you know, almost to death in some cases.
I understand that. I'm trying to find out if this is the same people happening year after year after year, and if, if nothing is being done, or if they aren't being cited, yet everybody seems to know who they are. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, or to find out.
Yes, I understand. We don't associate, you know, they're on the other side of the fence doing their thing, and we're a very quiet group. We're elderly people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Tom Peterson.
My name's Tom Peterson, I live at 2190 Cardinal Avenue.
Okay.
And I'm gonna complain about Kendall, which the city has purchased, the street that goes at the end of Kendall Junction back. There are now big trucks going down that road to, I think it is Constance, turning left and dumping gravel on down. Now, what they're doing, I don't know, but the trucks are coming in, parking in on Pheasant, leaving their bilateral trailers there, picking up the load, coming down Junko, making it a freeway, hitting the corner of Junko and Kendall, which is all gravel, causes a big dust storm, and the dust flies in my backyard and my yard and my house. And if I, if you were living there, I think you'd be upset, too. I called the police today about it, but it doesn't seem, I mean, you guys have bought that property across Kendall, where that big area is, why can't they park their trucks there? At least that doesn't get us in the dust bowl as much.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Let me defer a comment to, do you know anything about this?
I have no idea what he's talking about and who's doing it. Is it Bill Markenex subdivision doing construction?
I don't have any idea whose trucks they are, they're double trailers.
It's not the city's work, so I don't know anything about it.
Well, the city should at least keep the dust off the road a little bit somehow. I mean, I would think that you'd at least water down the road or something.
If I knew what was going on, I will send my folks out there, but I didn't know anything was going on out there. There are no permits given to do any work out there.
Well, I called the police today, and it didn't seem to bother...
I'm not the police department.
I understand that factor, but it didn't seem to stop them.
I didn't hear anything about it until you just brought it before me. I will look into it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else this evening? That's the end of my green slips. Anyone have anything? Okay, let's go on. If not, consent agenda for this evening is June 4th City Council minutes, proposed amendments to the standard conditions of approval, and a renewal of a CC RLS agreement. So what do you folks like to do with those?
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept them as written.
Okay. I've got a motion to accept that the minutes is written.
Second.
The consent agenda is written. A motion and a second.
Consent agenda and the regional library agreement.
Will that be part of the consent?
It's all one.
Yeah. So is the motion to accept the consent agenda or the minutes, I'm sorry?
The minutes, the consent agenda, and the regional library agreement. Can we do that at once?
You can just, the consent would be all three of those items, or you can...
I move we accept all three of those items.
Okay, just consent agenda would do it. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Okay, that's good. We don't have any public hearings this evening, and there's no unfinished business. So the new business is Resolution Number 981, receiving and acknowledging the July 1st, 2017 actuarial valuation report for the city's retirement program, and authorizing the city manager to make an additional contributions to the city's retirement plan. Staff report is from Andy Parks, our financial consultant. Andy, you've got it.
Good evening, Mayor, city councillors. The memo in your packet, you know, this evening provides you background information on the resolution and the report itself that you received. You'll be glad to address any questions. You know, I can on that, and if I'm unable to, you know, we can certainly follow up with Milliman and get back to you. The FY, our fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget includes an additional appropriation or contribution to the city's retirement plan of $410,000, something we talked quite a bit about at the Budget Committee meetings. As you know, the city manager's purchasing authority is limited to $300,000. The city's actuary report on the plan, in addition to providing the actuarial value of the assets and liabilities of the plan, it provides for the contribution rates for the city for the next two fiscal years. It provides that contribution rate with the contribution, additional contribution, and also the rate without the additional contribution. That rate difference is approximately 2.2 percent. So I'd be glad to address any questions you may have further as relates to moving forward and giving the city manager the authority to go ahead and make the planned investment as approved in your budget. Andy, we, that's part of redistribution of the old vehicle replacement fund, right? It's a portion of that, yes, sir. So, do we just, I mean, I'm all in favor of that, and let's, do we need just to say yes? Yes. Okay. Because you, we had, do you want to explain what the, where the, Chief? Do you want to explain exactly where the dollars are coming from? Yes. Yeah, the city's Vehicle Fleet Replacement Fund, which had grown to, what, a million dollars over the years. That fund, over the last two years, has been returned back to the funds that paid those dollars in, and from those funds, the water fund, the sewer fund, the street fund, et cetera, they are buying their own vehicles without putting them into a bigger replacement fund. Of the million dollars, 600,000 went back to the funds for vehicles, and that appears to be adequate for them going forward. There remained approximately $400,000, which, in, you know, conversation with you and the Budget Committee, those dollars were allocated to reduce the city's unfunded actuarial liability in the pension fund, thereby reducing the contribution rates. And that's where these, you know, these dollars were ultimately targeted. Thank you. So that, if we take these dollars that we already have and put them to that fund, at the end of the day, we'll have roughly only $35,000 hole versus a 686,000? Yeah, the number as of the unfunded liability was around 680-some thousand dollars in, what, June of 2015. That number in June of 2017, with the $400,000, you know, contribution, is roughly $35,000. I believe with earnings during the past year, it'll be in a positive situation. So, you know, it's a big swing with market performance plus the ability to make this contribution puts the city in pretty good position, certainly much better position than, say, PERS, you know, the retirement system is, and a much more stable contribution rate, you know, going forward. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Andy, for your hard work.
All right, we've got a motion to approve Resolution 981, receiving and acknowledging the July 1st, 2017 actuarial valuation report for the city's retirement program, and authorizing the city manager to make an additional contribution to the city's retirement plan. That's the motion. Sir, a second, please.
Well, second.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alyssa, would you poll the council, please, since there's no discussion on this item?
Councillor Gladwell?
Yes.
Councillor Mullen?
Yes.
Councillor Esselman?
Yes.
Councillor Quigley?
Yep.
Councillor Conquest?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna interrupt this smooth flow of business this evening and go to a appointment, appointment or reappointment?
Reappointment.
Reappointment of a library board person. Janet, can you carry the water on this one, please?
Mayor and council, you have in your packet a reappointment application for Lauren Mulligan. She served on the library board this last year for us, and we'd like to see her get reappointed.
Okay. How long was the appointment?
Her position is a one-year appointment.
It's one year.
That's why she's back already.
Okay, all right. Any thoughts from the council on that, with Janet's support? Seems like a good idea.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second to reappoint, is it, it's Lauren, Lauren Mulligan, to the library board. And any discussion? Probably not, but surprise, surprises are always there. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Okay. And Lauren, you're appointed to the library board for another year. Thank you. And, okay. Back to our steady progress toward the end of the evening. Finance Department reports Cindy and Elizabeth, it's, it's numbers. Hundreds of letters sent to library or property owners. Get your people to pay their water bill. Works, I guess. Anything on that? Okay? Chief Stevens, please report this evening.
Mayor and council, you have before you the statistical report for the month of May, and everything is in line from previous months. What I'm handing out there, actually it hasn't quite made it to you yet, is pictures from this year's fishing derby. We had over 40 kids that showed up, and you can see it was quite a successful day, once you get the picture there. And all of the kids caught fish, and you can see that some of them were very, quite large fish. And all of them had a really good time out there. To just quickly address the issue that Mr. Peterson is talking about, I just quickly pulled up the report from this afternoon, and an officer did respond out there to check on the dump trucks going through. They put it in what was what we call's extra patrol to have all the officers keep an eye out for it as well. The officer that went out there did find a dump trailer parked on one of the side streets that does not have any houses on it. It was parked back there. It was just the trailer, so there was not much you could do with it, but it was out of the way on a side street. So, but they're gonna continue to keep an eye on it to see what's going on back there as far as the speed issue goes.
Chief, the fish, is that from Roaring River?
Yes.
Chief, that's a big trout.
What did you use for bait?
Either worms or power bait is what they, what we give the kids that day to use. You can see the background there, there's a pretty good-sized pond that the kids fish out of, and they have a great time. They usually don't go home and tell the kids all limited out. They help the kids clean all the fish, so they're all cleaned. They usually give them a little packet of seasoning, a little recipe for cooking the fish up at home as well, so.
And the hatchery is okay with kids catching those big broodfish?
Yes, they put them in there specifically for this event, so.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Any questions or thoughts?
I think you might see the mayor there next year.
Yes.
I should go fishing with those.
Is second childhood?
Okay, thank you, Chief. Public Works Director, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, you have the monthly operating report from May. I don't have anything else to add to that, but I will answer any questions you may have.
Any excitement with new people coming to town, or any of the rumors true that I hear that, the latest one I've heard is Pizza Hut. Anyone heard that one?
That would be a Dan question, that would be.
I've gotten two calls about Pizza Hut. I don't know.
Is he okay with Taco Bell's got fans?
I don't know.
I don't know. I tried to call Dan, he was on vacation.
It's probably Pizza Hut.
Aren't there a lot of inquiries, I guess you might refer to them as tire kickers? Isn't that a pretty common thing, almost a daily occurrence?
Did you look at me, or Dan?
Dan, I guess.
Any of you.
Let's look down the, down the line a little bit.
Yes.
I mean, people inquiring about location and...
There's definitely been an uptick in interest in development activity, people asking questions, pre-application meetings, but there has not been a whole lot that has actually resulted in applications being filed.
Okay. And not very many people put off by our horrendous building requirements and negative attitudes toward growth?
Well, speak of yourself, not of us. Again, lots of phone calls, some pre-application meetings. We will see what actually results in an application, and then follow through.
I can answer one of those questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Gladwell, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm at the Tour of Homes, which happened two weeks ago, and sure enough, a contractor comes to me that apparently is building the duplex at the corner across from my house. Third and...
The one that burned?
Huh?
The one where it burned down, where they burned it down?
No, the duplex is gonna be built.
The fourplex, I believe, for me.
Fourplex, yeah, yeah. Proceeded to tell me, not knowing that I'm a city councillor.
You're supposed to say that, right?
But, but knowing that I live in Statean, about how horrible our system is, and made them do all of this stuff because of that roadwork apparently that was going on there, and if they didn't get their stuff in, I mean, he went on and on and on. I didn't, I just didn't respond to it. But in answer to your question, Mr. Mayor, yeah, there's a lot of contractors out there who still think that we are not open for business.
And Mr. Mayor?
That's just, just the way it is.
The corollary to that.
Wait a minute, response, response. Tell them, what, standard responses, play by the rules and you're fine. That's all it is.
I didn't have any response, I just listened.
That's probably better. As you know, I'm working with a bunch of organizations to put low-income housing around the valley. If I could clone Dan 20 or 30 times, I would, because Dan is very fair and very forthright, and he...
Well, we know that.
Well, I'm saying from a developer's perspective, unlike the city of Gresham, the city of Portland, places like that, I would love to have 20 Dans running Gresham's Development Department. He does a really good job of saying, here's what the rules are, and, you know, here are the lines, if you color within these lines, you know, then we'll have our pre-meeting, and I'll tell you what you need to do to make it go through. And I appreciate his candor and his excellence in service, and Lance and his crew, too.
Well...
Mr. Mayor, I did, I did want to say one other thing, just because Dan probably knows it. Actually, I did say something to that person, not about the Statean, but about the fact that I didn't like their... the fact that I didn't like their building plan anyway. Because I didn't think it fit between two of our greatest architectural, architectural things and I thought that they might want to go back to the drawing board and, and come up with something that fit our town better. So, I did actually say something, forgot about that.
Yeah, they're gonna have fun parking three and four cars on single car spaces, but that's, that's what people do. I was over in Public Works the other day and got to listen to a couple of contractors arguing vociferously with our Public Works Director, and he finally simply told them, you know, just do what you're supposed to do. Oh, cutting corners and, oh, we'll throw this in just for the heck of it, and I didn't listen to the whole thing, it got loud though and, and our, our people just said, play by the rules, do it.
I wasn't loud though, correct?
Yeah, but I, that doesn't matter. No, it was just, you know, these...
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, these guys apparently wanted to cut corners or something, whatever it was, but they just got reminded that this is, this is the way it works here, boom. You don't have to like it, you just have to do it. Okay, thank you, planning, Dan, back on the hot seat, what, what's going on in your office, please?
Well, you've, you've got my report for the month of May in front of you, I don't really have anything else to add other than tonight's the first time I've heard about Pizza Hut.
Okay, all right. Janet, anything to add in your library report?
I would like to add that summer reading is in full swing and encourage you guys to come and sign up for summer reading and also let you know that the University of Oregon's Museum of Natural and Cultural History is coming this Thursday to do a program for our kids on Oregon's geology, so.
Okay, wonderful, any, I, I wasn't paying attention, I'm sorry, any guest speakers this summer?
We don't usually have them in the summer, we did last year on a, somebody, a local speaker who was, lives in England and was home for the summer.
Okay.
But we, we'll start again in the fall.
Okay, good, thank you, thanks very much. Any more comments from the public this evening, this time, this, yes?
Page Hook, 2088 Quail Run Avenue, I have a question. Is it appropriate for someone to be commenting on applications that may or may not come before the city council and telling them to redraw stuff? Because it doesn't fit Staton, is that appropriate to discuss? It's not really a rhetorical question, it's a real question.
Are you referring to what I said?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems not quite right.
Okay, and if I were serious with the man, it would have been, but he happens to be a friend of mine and we were talking in jests, and the only reason that I brought it up is because of something between Dan and I, where, where the problem was is probably I shouldn't have brought it up here.
Probably, yeah. And then also, is it also appropriate to be talking about your businesses on the side during a city council meeting of developing? And, and whether you're developing things and, I mean, I just don't see how that fits in with our, our council meetings.
Are you talking about me?
Yes.
In my case, it was, it was not having to do with anything about me, but the fact that I see a lot of people who are in Dan's equivalent in other cities, and a huge compliment to Dan for the job he does in terms of laying out the cards on the table and telling you exactly what you need to do, so I don't necessarily see any reason to apologize. It is merely a statement that I've seen 34 Dans in the past six months and that Dan and his crew, to my knowledge and what I do, do an excellent job about spelling out the process, what needs to be done, and Bill Reed, who heads up seeds, was hugely complimentary toward Dan, and I think Dan got an email about that, because his process is so much clearer and so much better and could serve as a model to the other cities. So, I don't think that there's anything but a compliment to Dan and a compliment for the way that we do things here in my, my comment, I think that Dan does a really, really excellent job at being straightforward with the rules, and when we ask things like, can we build a garage here for Tom, he gives us a really straightforward answer, and then he tells us things we don't like to do or we do like to do about heights and things like that, but you know what, when we go into the meeting with plans, we are prepared and he does a good job of making sure they sail through. We've been working with the city of Gresham for three years.
Counselor Conquest, this is exactly what I'm talking about, is what you're talking about right now, is this appropriate for you to be talking about the plans that you are making to develop properties during the Staton City Council meeting?
I'm talking about other cities, I'm talking about Dan as well, and I don't think it's inappropriate to compliment Dan for the job he does, especially...
Dan does a fantastic job and it can be simply stated like that without bringing in your, your personal business.
Okay, Paige, I apologize if I've offended you somehow, but I want him to know that not only do I think he has a personal...
I just, I feel like it's inappropriate and I just wanna, I want clarity, is it appropriate for someone to be talking about their personal business while sitting on a city council seat?
My personal business doesn't have anything to do with a city council seat here.
And so then why is it being talked about? Is that appropriate? Can someone answer that question for me, whether that's appropriate or not?
It was a compliment to Dan, ma'am, and that's what I intended it to be and that's why I still hold it by. I really wish he were in the city of Gresham. He does a great job of upholding our laws and making it very clear to the people who come to see him that we are open for business and here's what the rules are. I compliment him highly on that, I wish there were more people like Dan in the world.
Yeah, council, it's three minutes, probably about up. Paige, did you get an answer that you wanted?
I didn't get an answer.
Okay.
On whether it's appropriate or not to be talking about your personal business while sitting on a city council seat.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think to try to address your question, we can, I can bring it forward to the city attorney and, and ask him to make an opinion on that and comment. I don't feel comfortable commenting because I'm not the city attorney, so.
Thank you, Keith.
But we, we'll follow it that way and see what he says.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paige, anyone else? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is David Patty, 982 Cooper Court in Staton, Oregon. Actually, I have a question for the library head, as far as these, this reading program, my daughter's pretty heavily involved in it, she really enjoys it and my hat off to you guys for setting that up. It's my understanding that you guys have these, I guess they're called mascots or something like that? Is it correct that they're directed to be in a shop window of a shop that's participating in this program?
They are supposed to be in a shop window, or at least the paper that we take them in the shop window. And typically they are.
What are you doing to direct the business owners who have not complied with the requirements?
When, what we do is about halfway through July, we make clues up so that kids have an extra, make up clues for if, if they didn't find them, so that they can catch up that way. Also, if somebody tells us that we, that one's not up on the window, we'll, we'll give them a call. The business owners have been really fantastic about hosting them, so I'm, I'm sure it's not a problem if we, if we get told that there's, they're not up in the window.
Terrific, I might send you an email later.
Okay.
That's all I had, thank you.
Awesome.
All right, thank you David. Anyone else? Business from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a moment to publicly thank Sean O'Day with the Midland Valley Cog for his, his presentation during the last meeting. I got a chance to talk to Sean and thank him and tell other cities that I thought it was a event worth hosting and having, so just a public thank you to him and wish everyone a happy 4th of July. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have anything else other than that appointment, which we moved up, thinking this was gonna be a lot longer meeting and you folks might not want to stay for all of it, so we've got that, then business from the council. Anything? Okay, future agenda items for July 16th, Star Cinema Lease, a ward of bid for a Slurry Seal project, and comprehensive plan and zone map amendments. On that, we are about done, I hope everyone comes out for 4th of July parade and activities, should be a good one.
Mayor, are we gonna do a mayor and council if people want to for 4th parade?
All right, well, I hope you would, I'm, I'm so involved in it that I'll be out running around probably walking alongside a vehicle passing out candy as a, as a perfect example of how to do it right instead of just throwing it out the window. No, don't get under that front wheel, kid, get, just leave it, you know, this kind of stuff, so, I'm gonna be busy, I hope the council will take part in fourth. Get in a car with a sign on it, ride around or get out and walk or on somebody's float, but, yeah.
Come for free hot dogs and free snow cones at New Life, that's what I'll be doing.
Okay, wonderful, all right, you're gonna get one of your convertibles out and ride around?
Need be, I'll get a second or third one out if somebody wants to man them.
All right, it should be a great day, weather's supposed to be nice enough and I can't think of anything else to do tonight except say, we're done, thank you.